Good evening and welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Worcester City Council this Tuesday, March, Monday, March 21st, first full day of spring 2022. We're in council chambers and live streamed on YouTube. It's after 7:30 PM. The next meeting will be Monday, April 4th, 2022. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Ms. Knappich.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Reynolds.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Well, everyone's present and accounted for, so we have a quorum. Agenda will remain as presented, and at this time, I ask that you stand and join city council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of the March 7, 2022, meeting.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Myers. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Knappich. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The minutes of March 7, 2022 are approved. Mr. Mayor, welcome, and hopefully you brought this good weather with you.
Well, I'd like to claim that I did, and I guess we'll just leave it at that, huh?
Yeah.
Just a quick report. The last couple of weeks have been more calm than many weeks have been. So different things happened. We had a WEDC meeting. We talked about the selection info where Worcester is number two in the state of Ohio and number three nationally up from number seven. So, you know, still basking in that glow of that announcement. And then just talked about possible new prospects and developments happening in our area. Had a chance to tour the Schenell Building out in the Worcester Innovation Park. It's really amazing how quickly that building went up and how large it is, over 200,000 square feet. The real amazing piece is that Worcester brush is going to be three times the size of the Schenell Building, and so it's going to be an amazingly large place. Had the privilege of swearing in six police officers last Monday. Connor Orr, Kyle Moss, Marissa Somraldo, Nicholas Pagni, Christopher Toposki, and Megan Wasick. So they've been with us for some time, but we didn't have a chance to do the swearing in ceremonies with the COVID protocols, so we got caught up on that. We had a groundbreaking of Mariola Restaurant, Italian restaurant, and Liberty Bell Apartments on last Friday. So congratulations to the folks behind that, Mike Mariola and Matt Long and their group Chad Borman. So nice new development on the east end of town where our entertainment district is going. WEDC held a lunch with Magnet, which stands for Manufacturing Advocacy Network. The president and CEO Ethan Karp came down and was talking about growth and had a real nice message for folks in the area. And just a final heads up, the Dix Expressway has started, so if you're traveling out that direction, expect to have some limitations, and that'll be there for probably the next year or better. With that, President Biden-Dyke, that's everything to report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have no petitions tonight, and no one's signed up to talk on a agenda item. That brings us to unfinished business, which there is none. So we have two items under new business. First is ordinance number 20 day... Oh, mine didn't copyright. 2022 day 05. And that will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. So before I get to you, Mr. Sanders, would you please read the title of it, Mr. Paulo?
Ordinance number 2022-05, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2015-33 by authorizing the mayor to modify the enterprise zone agreement with Tech4USA, Inc. and the Worcester Growth Corporation to accommodate additional expansion and investment and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is a very exciting piece of legislation. We have a local business that is willing to invest $2.5 to $3.5 million in construction at their facility at 3690 Long Road. What they are asking for is a modification to their existing 75% easy agreement to allow for an additional $25,000 to $30,000 square foot of expansion to their facility and also to allow 36 months for the firm to regain its 250 employment commitment. The current exemption ends on the 31st of 26 and the performance on 12/31 of 2036. This is something that I think ultimately we love to see in our community, that we've got businesses that want to invest in our town, they want to stay here, and ultimately, this is a really, really great opportunity for them. With that, Jonathan, Mr. Malley, is there anything that you would wish to add to that information stream?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. The only other thing to add with that is that what we're looking at through this is exempting the additional $25,000 to $30,000 square foot expansion. Critically, these are basic sector position jobs, which means that they are jobs that basically pay all of their salary, and all of the investment in this facility will come from revenues generated outside of our state. So these are revenues coming into our community as opposed to revenues circulating in our community. So this provides a real financial gain for everyone, and these are basic sector jobs tend to have a multiplier effect. So these are the types of jobs that create the demand for our non-basic sectors such as retail and housing and so forth. It provides incentive in that market as well by increasing the volume of workers in our community. So also too, just to mention, post-exemption, well, immediately this project would generate savings, revenues for the community of roughly $11,000 to $15,000 annually, and then post-exemption, between $45,000 and $62,000 of revenue. That is on top of the $133,000 that the company presently contributes in its local real estate tax, not mentioning local income tax as well. Lastly, I'd like to make a quick introduction to Mr. Kevin Weldy, the CEO of Tech4, and Mr. Darren Farmer, the CFO of Tech4. This is the team that is working to help make this expansion, which is being done in partnership with Jobs Ohio, our state economic development agency, has been involved here because this is a project that very easily could locate elsewhere. So we would like to also express our thanks to the Tech4 team for working to make Worcester its number one spot and priority, and we thank you for your time. Thank you.
And with that, Mr. President, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place this on third and final reading.
All right, there is a motion by Mr. Sanders to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Mr. Paulo, would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
All right, the rules have been suspended. I look to you again, Mr. Sanders.
I would motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Any further questions, discussions? Now's the time. I know our former councilman-at-large, Mr. Ansel's here to answer any questions too, as unaccustomed as he is to the public speaking.
Do we have the kind of time?
Mr. Sanders, I don't have a question necessarily. I just want to thank Tech4 for their investment in our community. I did read through the application. It's very thorough. It's a very simple addition to what you guys have already been doing. We appreciate it, and I'm going to support this 100% tonight. Thanks for all your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate the community support and certainly proud to be part of the community, and we'd be happy to be involved when we can, and anything you can do for us to help us grow our business, we certainly appreciate it. I truly appreciate you guys.
Our community is proud to have you here, that's for certain. Anything further? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Knappich?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2022-5 passes. Brings us to the last piece of legislation tonight. It's ordinance number 2022-06. It's presented by Mr. Reynolds. It's slated for three readings, although this is something we have passed on a regular basis, which involves what kind of services would be provided, these parcels that the owners have applied to annex into the city. Before I get to you, Mr. Reynolds, I will ask Mr. Paulo to please read the title.
Ordinance number 2022-06, an ordinance stating to the Wayne County Commissioners pursuant to revise Code Section 709.023, the services which the City of Worcester would be able to provide for a multiple parcel site known as Parcels 53-01859.006, which are contiguous to the City of Worcester and allowing for immediate enactment.
Mr. Reynolds, the floor is yours, and even if I didn't hear all those numbers, I wouldn't ask Mr. Paulo to read those again.
Thank you, Mr. President. This involves an annexation petition that has been filed with the Wayne County Commissioners. That's where annexations start. As part of that process, once it's filed, the petition then goes to the city, for the city to tell the applicants and the commissioners what services will be extended if the annexation should be approved. So this is only that first step in the process. What services would you make available to this land if the annexation is approved? You've seen the response that's been drafted by the administration, was tweaked once, laying out what services would be made available. Again, if I could just give a real brief overview of the land described, it's all the parcels named, consisting of 75 acres, but by and large, it is, are the residential properties on the east side of Oak Hill, north of the high school, up to Milltown. It is the former farm on the west side of Oak Hill that would have joined those properties that is now owned by AEP. Some other residential properties along Milltown west of the intersection there with Oak Hill, and then the Twitchell property, which is about 30 acres, that's at the northeast corner of the intersection there at Milltown and Oak Hill. These are coming in as a package, or that's where the annexation petition reads at this point. Again, this is, without getting to the merits of the annexation itself, this is part of the proposal we talked about a few weeks ago about road improvements to Milltown, to Oak Hill, and the installation of, or the improvement in the intersections at Milltown and Oak Hill, and Oak Hill and Oldman. Again, this is not a vote on the annexation itself, this is a vote on approving our response to the county commissioners as to what utilities would be available upon annexation. The annexation petition still needs to be approved by the commissioners, then it would come back to us again to take action on accepting the annexation or not. So with that, I don't know, Jonathan, is there anything you want to add? It doesn't matter, I suppose.
I believe that covers... I apologize. That covers just about all of it there. We had 80% of the property owners sign the petition, so actively being engaged. The City of Worcester, I myself and the petitioner on behalf of the City of, agent for the petitioner on behalf of the City of Worcester, and so this is also going in as a type 1 annexation. So if approved by the commissioners and then subsequently approved by this council, we would then conform those boundaries, and that would support that long-term economic development plan for the tax incremental financing district.
So with all that as background, I'd make a motion to suspend the rules and take this to third and final.
All right, motion by Mr. Reynolds to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
I heard Mr. Sanders' voice first, so Mr. Sanders seconded it. Any further questions or discussion? And I should add that more than just utilities, we would provide police and fire services as well, so... But this is a standard pro forma step in the annexation process, and it's just a statement of services to be provided. Anything else? It was a good summary there. Thanks, Mr. Reynolds. Seeing nothing else, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Suspend the rules.
Or to suspend the rules, I'm sorry.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Knappich?
Yes.
All right, the rules are suspended. Now, hopefully give the motion I was anticipating.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2022-06.
Okay, motion to adopt by Mr. Reynolds. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll go give this to Ms. Knappich there. Seconded by Ms. Knappich. Anything else? Now, seeing nothing further, please call the roll on the motion to adopt.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
And Knappich?
Yes.
All right, ordinance number 2022 day 06 passes. Brings us to the miscellaneous portion. Number of people have signed up to speak under the public portion. Remind you that you must be a citizen of the City of Worcester to speak, and you're afforded approximately two minutes. We'll start with, and I'll just go down the list, with Mr. Clark. And if you would come to the lectern and state your name and address, then you'll have two minutes. And in case you don't know where the time is, it's right here in front. And it makes a very grating sound when you hit the two-minute mark, I will warn you.
Oh, Kyle, that's your two minutes.
You got Mr. Cavan all shook up there, Reverend.
And I've yet to preach. Members of the council, thank you for your time. My name is the Reverend Walter Clark. I live at 752 Quindi Avenue, just right up the street. I drove, realizing I could have walked. I would like to say I am here today to talk about the events on the 12th of March, Saturday, from noon to 1:00. For those of you who are unaware, there was a group of counter protesters from the White Lives Matter Group of Ohio who were counter protesting the standard group that has been on the square for over 600 days. First of all, I would like to thank the police officers who came at that point in time who did a fantastic job of de-escalating that situation and preventing anything from getting out of hand, because the last thing any of us want is violence. Secondly, I'd like to tell you why we're there. I'd like to tell you at least why I'm there. I can't speak for everybody here. A lot of us are here because we love to hear the honks of support, and while that's all well and good, I am here because there are a lot of people who do a really good job of looking the other way. And I want to remind them that Worcester is a place that will not tolerate racism, and that we are here and that we are in this city to remind them that we believe that every single person is worthy of dignity and respect and fairness, and that our society has a lot of work to do, and that we are a group that wants to see that happen, and we definitely want to see it happen in our city. The fact that this protest has been going on for over 600 days tells me that you who are sitting here understand how important it is to this city, and that you love this city just as much as all of us who are on that square. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Nunez, again, please come to the lectern and state
Thank you so much. I'm not quite familiar with it as a resident of the St. Paul, but I will be taking up residence at 3574 Melrose Drive on the 31st, so I've formally relocated. I am Cheryl Nunez. I returned to my home state of Ohio after a seven-year stint on the West Coast to take a job at the College of Worcester, and I was immediately struck by the enormous natural beauty and the beauty of the built environment. But I'd like to express gratitude as well for the sustained support members of this community have shown for racial justice. It is certainly factored into my decision to join you. I don't know who you are. I haven't met many of my colleagues yet, but I'd like you to know I'm looking forward to making a positive contribution to this community and investing my talent and my treasure in making it even better. Thank you so much.
Ms. Houston, again, state your name and address, please.
You should have. Memorized?
Not everyone knows you, as big a character as you are, Ms. Houston.
You'd be surprised.
Not everyone that's watching will know who you are.
And don't start that till I start. Okay, I want to talk about how we're privileged with what's going on in the world today, how we're privileged to live in a country where we can stand on public square and voice our opinions without government interference. This right guaranteed by our constitution has resulted in the Wayne County Racial Justice Coalition approaching 700 consecutive days of someone, not everyone is there, certainly I haven't been there 700 days, of standing in the square and speaking out in support of racial justice and equality. This right has also resulted in one day where one group was, has used their First Amendment right to espouse their white supremacy views and beliefs. Groups and individuals have every right to speak their beliefs. However, each individual, especially those in leadership positions, like the mayor and members of councils who sit in this room, have a moral and ethical obligation to speak up since you're on camera, let the community know what values are important to you. The events of two Saturdays ago give each of you the opportunity to let the community that you serve know where you stand. I hope you don't let your opportunity pass you by. And I also want to thank the police, the chief, and the assistant, and all the people who are down there. I felt safe, and it was really wonderful to be there. The other group had some firearms, which is legal in Ohio right now to carry wherever you want, but I never felt they were going to be used. Thank you.
Mr. Sealing, again, please come to lectern and state your name and address.
Hello, I'm Paul Sealing. I live at 725 North Beaver Street. On Saturday, March 12th, I was downtown doing some shopping with my eight-year-old son. As we were getting ready to leave, I saw an unfamiliar group of people forming on the square. They were wearing tactical gear, carrying riot shields, had large signs that said "White Lives Matter," "Make White Babies," signs warning against the white replacement, and they were shouting hateful things. I told my son that I was going to quickly drop him off at our home so that I could return to the square to stand in opposition to this group and their white supremacist views. In that quick drive home, he could tell that I was upset and asked me a couple of questions. "You protest downtown, why can't they?" And "What difference are you going to make? You're just one person. They have more people and bigger signs." These were fair questions. I told him he was right. These people were allowed to express their views on the square just as I and others do. And again, he was right. Their group had more people, and they had bigger signs. I told him that when people choose to express messages of hate, we must stand against it, even if our signs are smaller or we don't have as many people. I told him I could not stay at home, knowing that fellow community members would be subjected to these hateful messages with no alternative. I had to use my voice to affirm that Worcester is not a place where white supremacy will go unchallenged. And so I returned to the square, at first on my own, to be one voice against this hate. I stood there, knowing that soon other voices would join me, just as they have done daily for almost two years, to say that Worcester is a place for all and that we don't let white supremacy go unchallenged. But we still need more voices. We need you, as the leaders of this community, to clearly condemn the white supremacists who are demonstrating in Worcester. I already tell my son that in Worcester, many advocate for racial justice, but I want to be able to tell my son that you too, the elected leaders of Worcester, stand against these hateful white supremacist messages. As leaders, you have influence and a voice. Please use them to act and speak against white supremacy. Thank you.
Ms. Weber, again, please come to the lectern and state your address.
My name is Desiree Weber. I live at 124 East Liberty Street downtown. The events of the last several weeks, both here locally and internationally, have brought to the fore the importance of being able to demonstrate and speak out publicly and not be censored by government. And we all know that government is legally obligated in the United States by the First Amendment to not make laws or rules or policies that discriminate between viewpoints, and that's great, and we all recognize that as an important foundation and core keystone of American law. But at the same time, that doesn't mean that individuals, residents, citizens, and government officials can't speak out against particular messages that they disagree with. And the city, of course, has a legal obligation to tolerate all kinds of different viewpoints from all kinds of different groups and messages. And a message like the one that Paul just mentioned that happened two Saturdays ago on the square, a group that was articulating messages of white supremacy, are a really pointed test of that, right? They test whether or not the First Amendment is really operative and whether the city, both legally and as a community, upholds its values. So yes, legally, the city is bound to let people of every different political opinion speak their mind. But the residents of the city and the administrators and the officials of the city as individuals... But the residents of the city and the administrators and the officials of the city as individuals and as office holders also have an obligation to decide which side of certain political issues they want to stand on. And so I'd encourage you to do that. Any suggestion that Worcester standing up as a community for almost two years now to support racial equality and to do so publicly and to demonstrate that isn't the reason that these people were here. But public officials standing up and saying that they don't agree with these people is an important part of this. Thank you.
Ms. Sewell, please come to the lectern and state your address and name, please.
Hello, my name is Ruth Sewell. I live at 1511 Burbank Road, and I've lived there for over 40 years. I'd like to talk about my goal in attending the daily demonstrations downtown. It's to promote awareness of the racial injustice in America today. I want people to be aware that they are not alone in wanting equal rights for all. In spite of the reforms of the 1960s, racial injustice is still rampant in this country. People who want racial justice need to know they are not alone. Many white people want a fair playing field for all. I don't want an unfair advantage, and I don't think you do too. I know we have many supporters in town. People honk, they wave, they stop to thank us, they bring us things. College of Worcester parents have told me that our demonstrations made an impact on their choice of the College of Worcester for their students. It's up to white people to take a stand against bigotry. We are the ones with the upper hand. I implore the city to support humanity by taking a stand against white supremacy and for equality. Black, including people of color, plus white, equals all people. Yes, all people matter. Diversity is America's superpower.
Ms. Birch, please come to the lectern and state your name and address.
My name is Laura Birch. I live at 3 Barberry Road in Worcester. Like my fellow citizens before me, I'm here to talk about the events of March 12th. I've often been at the square to lift up the value of black lives and protest against the systemic forms of racism that still exist in our society today. I was there on March 12th when the white supremacists came to town to spout their hate, their anti-Semitism, their Nazism, and their racism. Today, I'd like to lift up the voice of a self-described black woman warrior poet, Audrey Lord, who died in 1992, but whose words still resonate throughout the decades. When she was faced with a possible cancer diagnosis, she had a lot of sort of self-reflection to do. And in a very famous speech, she wrote about that reflection, and she said, "I was going to die, if not sooner than later, whether or not I had ever spoken myself. My silences had not protected me. Your silence will not protect you." When she was giving this speech, when she was about to give this speech, she asked her daughter for advice. And her daughter said, quote, "Tell them about how you're never really a whole person if you remain silent, because there's always that one little piece inside of you that wants to be spoken out. And if you keep ignoring it, it gets madder and madder and hotter and hotter. And if you don't speak it out one day, it will just up and punch you in the mouth from the inside." When we don't speak out against abhorrent forms of hatred, like racism and white supremacy, we do harm to ourselves as individuals. And as a society, when we don't speak out, we do harm to our society. White supremacy is a cancer on our society, and I implore you to speak out against it. Thank you.
Can't pronounce your last name adequately. I apologize. Mr. Gemetro? I see you're from Cleveland.
That's right.
You know the rules. We've had this dialogue before. You're not from the city, you're not a citizen, so I'm sorry, I cannot let you speak, so.
Okay, it's on the record.
All right. Ms. Olubusi, again, if I mispronounced your name, I'm sorry, or mister, I'm sorry. Couldn't read the first names. You know, I have a 50/50 shot, and that's why I'm not a gambler.
I normally go by Angela for short. Helps, makes it easier for everyone.
And if you'd state your address, then you may commence.
Yep, I live on 415 E. Wayne Avenue. I guess I should begin. All time's running. First and foremost, I really, as personally speaking for myself personally, but also speaking with people I know around Worcester, especially those of the darker skin tone, I really appreciate the process downtown. It really makes Worcester a home away from home, especially for me as an international student, as well as others, other more domestic students. And with that in mind, it kind of saddens me that not only with the, even when you use a phrase attack, or you see president of the white supremacists came to town two Saturdays ago, but the elected heads of the city to directly condemn the actions as immoral acts, and also any moral act is saddening and also very incredibly disappointing. It kind of darkens or distorts the image of what I've had for the last four years, being at the College of Worcester and having honestly a wonderful experience of a lifetime being there. And thus, with that in mind, I heavily implore you, speaking for myself and also a lot of the students who have lived a similar life as I am, I heavily, heavily implore you to make a statement against the attacks. Thank you for your time.
No, I'll get to you. I didn't mean to forget you in the order. I just looked and said, "Hey, Miss David." Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Julia Gertis, and I live at 1315 Bell Avenue. I started attending the daily demonstration for racial justice on the square this year. I was on the square last week when the White Lives Matter demonstrators, white supremacists, visited Worcester. While the responses we get from passerby aren't always positive, I've been pleasantly surprised by the amount of support that I've witnessed. I believe that we help black people feel a little bit more supported in the Worcester community. While there are folks in this town who disagree with us, the White Lives Matter demonstrators are not representative of what I've seen of the people of Worcester. And they're not even from Worcester. This group, White Lives Matter Ohio, USA, is made up of members from all over Ohio and is part of a much larger international movement. Their main objective is recruitment and publicity, not counter protest. To that end, their strategy is to demonstrate in areas that are, quote, "densely populated" by white people. These white supremacists would have come to Worcester sooner or later, regardless of the demonstrations we held on the square. Worcester is not the only town that they have demonstrated in, nor will it be the last. These white supremacists came here hoping that they could make being openly, publicly racist an acceptable part of the culture here. And I'm glad that when they came here, that there were, that we were there to stand up for what was right, for racial equality, for racial justice, and that we provide a forum for ourselves and for people of this community to take a stand for what's right. And, so bad at speaking in public, but it's really important, even if legally they have the right to free speech, everyone... It's, it's...
And Mr. Griffith, I'm sorry I overlooked you, so I'm glad you have a physical presence.
It is a shock that when this knows, you overlook.
Yeah, yeah.
My name's Dave Griffith. I am, I live at 411 North Buckeye Street here in Worcester. Council president, council members, distinguished persons and guests. I am here to talk about a person who has worked for the city for 14 years without a blemish on his record, who has furthered his education in his field to better serve his community and helps his fellow workers as a union representative. In his private life, he goes on church mission trips and teaches Sunday School. The night before he was to represent his fellow workers in contract negotiation, he was unceremoniously terminated. His offense was that in the seventh day of a 10-day COVID quarantine, he went to his daughter's volleyball game. He and his wife masked and went to great lengths to keep a more than sufficient distance from others. Today, the CDC says five days quarantine is good enough. In January, the CDC said we were to wear masks indoors. If a city employee acting in the interest of the city were to have gone to a meeting of over 200 citizens and refused to wear a mask, should that city employee be fired? On the night of the volleyball game, the Assistant Chief, whose official title is Community Risk Reduction Chief, traveled outside the district to the exact time and place to take pictures of Brandon Hewitt and his wife, Tricia, going to the game. As a citizen of Worcester, I want someone to justify to me why the administration is spending so much money to spy on and terminate firefighter Brandon Hewitt. The night before he was to represent the Worcester firefighters in the union contract negotiations, it is my opinion that Brandon Hewitt should be reinstated to his position and for the betterment of our beautiful city, allowed to return to his job. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Cavan, we'll start with you, sir.
With, oh, are we in miscellaneous?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't, okay. Well, I would publicly support the Black Lives Matter movement and denounce white supremacy in my personal life, as well as my seat here, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Ward?
Thank you. And I would agree with Mr. Cavan. And I happened to be down on the square that Saturday with some friends from out of town. I was embarrassed at the display that was going on across the street from the daily Black Lives Matter protest. And I'm sure that some of the gestures that we showed to those individuals sort of expressed how we felt about it, but publicly, I will state, I am very much opposed to it. And I thank you all for standing up for what you believe in on the square. And thank you, everybody, for coming to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I want to thank everybody who came to speak this evening. Appreciate your time. Thanks.
Mr. Myers?
Thank you, President Biden-Dyke. Linda, I don't need an introduction, I know who you are, so. I want to express my support of those folks that are downtown on the northeast corner very much. I've met with Desiree and Weber, as well as Adida Green for the Orville Worcester N.L.A.C.P. on a number of occasions. My support of that group, I think, is fairly well-known, but I just want to state it publicly. I was a little shocked at the people on the square. I didn't know they were there until after all those other events that you referenced. But I gave them a big thumbs down when I drove by. I don't know if that really does a whole lot. I'm hoping that if we ignore them, they just go away, like, and I think they're only here because of the success that we've shown with the rally we've had for the last almost 700 days. So I appreciate everybody's efforts, and you have my support.
Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone that came to speak this evening. Appreciate your desire to share your thoughts with us, and go in peace.
Ms. Knappich?
Thank you. As a lawyer, I certainly support First Amendment rights. I think it's wonderful that people can and do get out and voice their opinions in a peaceful way. That's how we have dialogue, that's how we make positive changes, by not speaking out for whatever you believe, in a peaceful, loving way. We allow evil forces to march in, quite frankly. I wasn't there, I don't know whether, I don't know anything about the White Lives Matters group, so I don't want to speak on that. But I am very pro First Amendment, allowing people to peacefully and kindly speak their minds. I do support this group. I honk every time I go by, and I'm proud of Worcester. I have friends all over the country, and whether you know it or not, you are known outside of this city and outside of this state because I've gotten comments. One of the things that I used to tell my children, I have two children, and you know, they always have the sibling rivalry, and I always told them, "Love's not a pie. If I give you a slice, it doesn't mean that the other one gets less. It's always going to be more." So if we express that and support one another in a non-divisive way, then I think this just makes the community that much better, and I thank you. I also wanted to say thank you to the Tech4People. I am really excited that you're doing this. This is kind of in my neck of the woods, over there on Long Road. So thank you very, very much for your investment in our community. We sincerely, sincerely appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Biden-Dyke. I don't think, it almost doesn't need to be said, but I guess we're going to say it anyway, that white supremacists have no support in this community, whether we're talking about council, the administration, or in the general citizenry. I'm sure you can find isolated cases where people will be espousing that, but the presence of this group two weeks ago, again, they were outsiders, came from outside of our community. I think, Ms. Knappich may challenge me on this, but the first thing you learn about the right to free speech is the test is not speech you like, it's speech that offends you. And so this group came, and, you know, they tested it. You know, they came with the intent to offend. They, you know, summed speech, and I go to the courthouse pretty much every afternoon, and I always have to check, at this point, I have to check in with the security there, and I say, "Okay, who's on the other corner of this today?" Because my eyesight's not good enough that I can read the signs across on the other corners. And, you know, we don't want to get in the position where we're being asked to judge on all the protesters out there and say, "Okay, are you with this one or without them? What's your take on this one?" You know, during the holiday season, we had a young man with a Jesus Matters sign in front of the courthouse. He staked out a position all on his own, I think, kind of just not in opposition to either side, but just to stake out a middle ground. And I kind of liked that, because like, number one, I was close enough, I could read that sign consistently, and I can't consistently read the other signs out there. But this group that you're talking about, and I have mixed emotions about this discussion because as, and I didn't catch your last name, Ms. Julia said, they came here for publicity. And if they had been allowed to go, you know, without a whimper and without the discussion tonight, maybe we wouldn't hear from them again, because it would have been a failure. And I'm a little uncomfortable that maybe we're giving them exactly what they're looking for. That's, I guess, the risk we run. But when we've made the decision, and I don't say we, but because of community, you make the decision, but when the decision's been made that you're going to open up the public square to public comment at noon every day, you're going to attract all kinds of opinions, and almost none of them will be universally loved. And that's the case we have now. So as long as we're going to keep having protests at the square, you can look forward to a continuation of seeing opinions there that you don't like. And probably a return of some groups that are only there for the publicity that's otherwise generated by that space. So I'm not saying that that's a good thing or a bad thing, but that's just, I think, the way it is. So in general, you know, I'm all in support of the group at the northeast square, but the fact that we're turning in our downtown space into a place for demonstrations every day... day, it's not going to be messages necessarily all the time that we're all happy with. And we can't have a knee-jerk reaction every time and say, "Oh, this is terrible, you know, we've got to shut things down now," because it's going to continue as long as we have free speech, and I hope, you know, I'll fight for that every day. So, again, sorry to be so long-winded. We get paid by the hour a lot of times, so, you know, it's just natural.
That's the right of word.
Exactly. So I do appreciate everybody coming tonight and sharing your concerns, but if, if some people are hesitant to, to weigh in on this one, I think it's because they don't want to be in a position where they're asked to say, "Okay, what about this group that was here last week? Maybe they weren't white supremacists, but they're some other group. What's your take on those?" And we're, I don't think anybody wants to get into that game, but that's it.
I just want to thank those that came for loving and caring about this community as you do. With your spirit and efforts, it's clear to me that racial justice and equality will prevail. Everyone just has to keep fighting the good fight against evil, abhorrent ideas, and you are commended for taking the stand that you have. And I know everyone here up on, with, on council supports your efforts, and I don't think there's anyone among the, those in the city that even thinks that those that are counter protesting, you know, have legitimate ideas and are worthy of much time or consideration. And again, thank you for making this city a wonderful place to live. It's because of citizens like you that people enjoy living in this community, so thank you very much.[1784.04][1784.07](APPLAUSE). Mr. Sivestri has moved to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, everyone, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.